I'd like to call the June twentieth, twenty twenty-two Common Council Meeting to order. It is approximately six oh one. And Councilman Galloway, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthum.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Present.
All present.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven zero. Petitions, comments from citizens, do we have anybody here from the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record and please keep it under three minutes, no personal attacks, and not question and answer, so welcome.
Hello, my name is Cedric McCoy, I live at seven zero nine D Street in La Porte, Indiana. First, I must confess that over the last few years, I have been gravely disappointed with the white moderate. I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that the Negro's great stumbling block in the stride towards freedom is not the white citizen's counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace which is the absence of tension to a positive peace which is the presence of justice, who constantly says, I agree with you in the goal you seek, but I can't agree with your methods of direct action, who paternalistically feels he can set the timetable for another man's freedom, who lives by the myth of time and who constantly advises the Negro to wait until a more convenient season. Shallow understanding from people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will. Lukewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., letter from Birmingham Jail, eighteen sixteen, April sixteen, nineteen sixty-three. Yesterday, in celebration of Juneteenth, Mayor Dermody posted a simple graphic and informational line about the holiday to his mayoral page. Like the majority of his posts, it attracted some local comments and likes from those who kept up with local politics on some level. Unlike his other posts, it quickly became a hotbed of invalidation, dog whistles, and general racist sentiment from much of the community. Ask virtually any person of color in La Porte if this was a shocking turn of events, and at best, they might lend you a sympathetic laugh. At worst, they'll show up to a city council meeting and have their voice heard. Mayor Dermody knowingly allowed this to happen by posting about Juneteenth in such a milquetoast fashion, and yet I would wager that he and his colleagues will tote such a dedication to DEI, representation, et cetera, in future campaigns. Mayor Dermody, deleting some comments is not enough. The damage had already been done to those who paid attention, to those who regard your stances, to those who hope and wish that you will put some effort into making the city a better and safer place for its community. I strongly encourage you or your colleagues to make a formal public statement about the city's stance on such racism and whether or not you wish to enable it moving forward. You quite literally have one of the largest megaphones in this community, and yet thus far you have refused to protect those in your community who seek your action, offering only empty sentiments and Facebook lives promising change. I assume you had some prior knowledge of the culture of the city prior to becoming mayor. There is no substantial argument you could lend to this body or city in defense of your choice not to be anti-racist. You and the city will never achieve the expansions you seek, i.e. thirty by thirty, if you cannot even support an already existing and strongly rooted portion of your populace. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council. And first, I'd like to say I do not delete one comment whatsoever. This is a public, not for question and answer. This is a public page, and everyone is protected under the First Amendment, and whether I like dislike, I do not delete comments. And number two, my approach to any individual is to contact them directly and ask for a face-to-face eyeball-to-eyeball, eyeball-to-eyeball about any situation that seems inappropriate or unnecessary or to discuss further. So, number one, I didn't delete. Number two, Facebook is used to update information, I don't live on it, we have too many things happening in the community. We have an open door policy, and I welcome yourself to everybody else that would like to improve this community addressing it. I'm sorry that there are individuals in the community that may appear, as you've stated, racist, but I've had several comments, in fact, people putting my kids out there and then calling my personal phone, which I've put out there last night, with some comments that we'll leave private, but we keep it open and we'll continue to do so. Thank you. Other public comments, anything online?
No.
Okay, so as we come to the Fourth of July, a great opportunity, and what makes La Porte special are individuals that love their community, love the patriotism and the July, and July Fourth. And if you drive all around our community, you will notice what I think is something very special. Flags that fly over the overpass, Lincoln Way, and it's an amazing tribute to our local armed forces and those that are serving to protect our freedom. Jim Roy is that individual that makes La Porte special since September eleventh, two thousand and one, and he has gone on to include flags that honor branches of the military as well. And he's been named an outstanding citizen and has been given a key to the, by the city, by past administrations, but we just wanted to take a few minutes and recognize Jim, because I don't think we can say ever thank you enough for all the work that he's done for La Porte. So Jim, if you don't mind standing forward here, talk to, if you don't mind sharing, come forward, talk about how this all started from your perspective, and how many flags you fly a year.
Well, we started with ninety. In two thousand, we're up to six hundred now. And I decided to do the Armed Forces Flags two years ago, along with the police flags, the fire department. And this year, we included the Green Line Flag, which is the EMT flag. I thought everybody should be recognized in our community for their services they performed. So I do this to make everybody feel good. When you drive down the road, if you don't feel good, that's your fault. So that's why I do it.
And the range that you put these flags, just for everybody in the public, so they're aware?
They're from Bay Road all the way to the end of the parade route, they're from city limits on Indian, Indian Avenue all the way to Waverly Road, they're on Monroe Street, they're on Michigan, and they're on Boyd Boulevard. So we have roughly six hundred flags bought this year, and we do have replacements. So if something goes wrong, we will replace the flags. Enjoy them, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, you've received the key, you've received Outstanding Citizen. We have a little gift just to say, from this team's perspective and administration, thank you. So we'd like to get out for a little photo, recognize Jim, if you don't mind coming forward. Counsel, you know the drill, come around and help Jim, ladies. So we have a special, we figured that,
who's having, if you don't mind, having one hand here? A city of, Laura, a city of La Porte flag, the door to the future promise. You don't have one, right? All right, ladies. I'd like to talk, buddy, best thing is you can go now.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
So I'm going to move to the Diversity and Inclusion Presentation. We have a committee of Diversity and Inclusion members. Marvin McCoy is the president of the committee, and I'd like for him to come forward, introduce your members, and I know you'd like to speak on some items, and if they don't mind coming forward when I drew, when introduced, to talk about a couple topics.
Come on up, members. So we have some new members, or one new member to our committee here. And I know that there's been some changes to the council as well, so this was kind of a good time for everyone to lay eyes on the committee as a whole, and I'm glad that everyone made it here and everything today. I don't know if you guys can hear me. So what I wanted to do is just take a moment to just kind of explain what we've been up to, probably since the last time you've either laid eyes on us or thought about us, so. I describe this committee as a really, really powerful think tank. We come together, we have some wonderful conversations about many, many things. Diversity and inclusion, of course, is what we're about, but because of the makeup of this committee, we have this depth of knowledge, I guess, that allows us to, to really go at it hard, I guess. And so again, we have some really great conversations through the city, we have some really great liaisons to this committee. We have had access to some really great virtual conferences and trainings. We've enjoyed some support from our community. We've had a few community, community members come in and speak with us, which has been really great. And one of those community members was a student at La Porte High School, which came in and talked about a diversity and inclusion project that was going on at La Porte High School during Black History Month. So that was really cool. So that's what we're about. More lately, what we've been focused on is fair housing. Fair housing, as we come out of this pandemic, and everybody knows what a hot market it is, and then the changes that have gone on with the community in housing, whether it be the Monroe Street Apartments, everybody sees the, the what that's happening in the city, but they don't always know the why. And so having these great liaisons from the city working with us, we get to learn the why, and so that's really important. As people come to us, we're able to be a sounding board, one, but also explain what the why is behind some of this, things that they see going on in their community. So really important stuff. Again, powerful think tank. I feel like we're getting ready to take off. You know, we had some struggles in the beginning with COVID and meeting virtually. Change in staffing from the city side and community, or one of our committee members as well that we replaced, the mayor replaced. So, but I feel that we're on the cusp of something, and you know, we're just going to keep going up, so. Many of you probably know about me, I'm a local police officer, I'm a lifelong member of the city of La Porte. For a time, I was a school resource officer, which I certainly met a lot of people there, some of, some of those people are you. I also work part-time at La Porte Hospital, so I see some of you there as well. Father of two great children, adult children, and I've been married for twenty-two years. So that's just kind of a thumbnail sketch about me. I also wanted the other members of the group to be able, just to kind of talk about themselves just for a minute or two, just so you know who they are, and then, then we'll move forward from there.
Thank you.
Whoever wants to go first?
Hi, bro. I'm Frank Zlovenski, and I retired from the Diocese of Gary a few years ago. I'm a full-time deacon at Holy Family Church here in La Porte. Part of my work for the Diocese was with youth ministry and also education. And we did a number of ethnic diversity programs, faith-based, and I did a two-year study on racism in our diocese a few years back. We created study groups and helped people address the issue of racism and how we can basically attack it. So I'm kind of the, maybe the wisdom figure in the group here, so glad to be part of this group. And what else? I've lived in La Porte my whole life, and I'm kind of a, just basically a support and an advocate for the issues that we're dealing with regarding diversity and, and equity in our, in our, in our city. So I'm glad to be here and to be of any help that I can, thank you.
Everybody, I'm Saleh Brooks. I did not live here my whole life, so I've been in La Porte probably five years now. And basically, you know, I decided it'd be great for me to join the board, because as a younger guy to the community, I remember what it was like when I first moved to La Porte. And I noticed, you know, a lot of things should change, and I wanted to see how I can do my, you know, do a part in how to make the community more inviting. La Porte is very diverse, as you guys know. So I also started a friends club in La Porte, this is around all the time where this school shootings was happening, and I just know, you know, a lot of times, people just need one friend, they need one person to talk to, one person to know that they care, so I did that for about a year. So I just kind of figured like this is a great way for me to transition into kind of helping on a bigger project, so. I have a family here, I work here, you know, so I'm a local guy, and I think, you know, just me bringing my younger thoughts and kind of being able to reach you, because I really feel like that's the next goal, right? Like, how do we change the kids, because the kids can change our future? So I just want to be a big part of that and help change.
Hello, I think I'm the newest member, if I'm not wrong. So I'm Brenda Guizabal, better known as Susie Guizabal, that's how pretty much everyone knows me. I work at La Llamer School, I've been in La Porte since I came to the United States thirty-one years ago. I'm grateful for this opportunity, it's really, really, really awesome to be part of this committee, because I think you have a voice, and I think that is important now, you know, in these times. And like I said, I work at La Llamer School, been there for fifteen years. Previously, I worked at Dune Brook with the Parents Teachers Group, it was awesome, just working with little kids and seeing, you know, how much need there is to teach parents. I work with the Hispanic community, so that was very important for me. Learned a lot, and yeah, so that's a little bit of me. Married, no kids, actually I do have two hundred and three kids, adopted, all of them, I love them, all my kids at the school, so. Thank you, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
And she loves La Llamer basketball, by the way.
Of course, I do, we're ready for tenori, for sure.
Hi, guys. Probably seems like I only address the committee during Pride Month. That's when I've historically been here, the past couple of years. My name is Alyssa Affeld, and I also sit on the committee, I'm the co-chair. It is such an honor and a privilege to serve the city that I live in. I grew up in La Porte, transplanted to Muncie for a period of time, but ended up back here. La Porte is the city that I raised my kids in, and it's important to me that they feel like they are accepted and that they are safe and that they are loved here. And I think that this committee is incredibly important for bringing not only younger generations together, but older generations and different ideas, and the conversations that we have in committee meetings are riveting. We talk on domestic violence, we talk on substance use, we talk on housing, we talk about LGBTQ issues, we talk about the black community, we talk about the Hispanic community, and it's, it's really been incredible. So I appreciate the time that has been given to me.
And thank you all for serving before Marvin goes on, we really appreciate it.
I know Susie's nursing a knee issue over here. That's because she says that all of La Llamer's basketball success is due to her, and she got that injury. Did you have more?
No, I'll stick out here.
Okay, so just a real quick segue. Last year, as Alyssa stated, she talked to you folks about Pride, or maybe it was the last two months. So those are two important, these are two important things on the diversity calendar, it's Pride Month in Juneteenth. Today, we observe Juneteenth as a federal holiday, it was actually yesterday, but the way holidays fall on weekends, so we observe it today. So just a little quick bite-sized history lesson on Juneteenth, I don't want to bore anybody, it should only take me about an hour. I'm joking, just a few moments. So, Juneteenth, everybody knows that the Civil War was fought between eighteen sixty-one, eighteen sixty-five. Slavery was a central issue or reason for the Civil War. President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, signed eighteen, excuse me, signed September of eighteen sixty-two to be in effect January one of eighteen sixty-three, thus freeing the slaves. Texas was the farthest west Confederate state. So because of that, notification of the proclamation relied basically on the advancement of Union troops. Jokingly, I would say that, you know, there's no Twitter back then, and no I forty, so it took a while. June nineteenth is when this notification happened in Galveston, Texas, which was thought to be the last holdout for slavery. So that's where the nineteenth comes into, to play. Juneteenth celebrations began the following year in Texas and spread, basically with the Great Migration. This was, these were celebrations of freedom, culture, and heritage. Over time, many states began to recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday. And we will probably all know that last year, June twenty twenty-one, Juneteenth was made a federal holiday by President Biden. So this year, I think, is kind of like an inaugural, like a maiden voyage, really, of, of Juneteenth celebrations from a federally national, recognized level. It was signed into federal law a couple of days before, I think it was the twelfth or thirteenth of twenty twenty-one, so there really wasn't time to have these big celebrations planned until this year, and so I think that that's important. On a personal side, my parents are from a small town called Wilmer, Arkansas. In twenty-ten, the census was less than six hundred people. Wilmer, Arkansas is about four hundred forty miles northeast of Galveston, Texas. I can remember as a child, family trips, yearly family trips to Wilmer for the Juneteenth celebration. Again, in twenty-ten, less than six hundred people, I think when we were going there as, as kids, it was even less than that. I happened to catch a news article yesterday, a local, probably out of Little Rock Station, covered some of the Juneteenth celebration in Wilmer, and they estimated that ten thousand people were there in a town of six hundred for the celebration. So obviously, a big deal for those folks down there. I was fortunate to have a Juneteenth framework, not all African-Americans do. I believe the holiday is important, because it encourages education, awareness of what this holiday is and the significance of what it stands for. That's all.
Thank you, Marvin. Thoughts? Excellent. And that's why this Diversity and Inclusion Committee is here, to lead the charge with the administration and continue to educate our community. Thank you. Alyssa?
So Marvin talked about Juneteenth. I know last year I did a blurb on Juneteenth, but being a white woman, the impact is very different than coming from someone who understands what it's like to be black in America. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Pride, probably not as eloquently as Marvin. The Stoneroll Riots occurred on June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine. These riots took place as a reaction by the LGBTQ community to police brutality and harassment. The very first Pride March took place on June twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy, and since that time, Pride events have taken place worldwide, and they have evolved over time. Pride is a time where our community can bring awareness to the issues faced by our community and provides a platform to educate our bigger communities on LGBTQ history. Pride is a celebration of difference, but to me, Pride is a time where I can move freely about my community. It gives me the confidence to be out and proud, even in times where being out and proud haven't been as widely accepted. My hope is that the city of La Porte will continue to move forward and continue to bring LGBTQ-friendly businesses and services into the community, as well as someday celebrate Pride on a larger scale, with our own festivities to make our community feel safe and accepted within the city limits. I think I explained maybe last year that I didn't come out until I was twenty-five. I'm thirty, I'll be thirty-one here soon. I grew up in a family with religious beliefs that didn't necessarily back the way that I felt. I remember the first time understanding my sexuality at about thirteen years old. So if you can imagine being thirteen and really being very confused about how I feel about women versus how I feel about men, unfortunately, I am still attracted to men, but I like women, too. I believe that the correct terminology for my sexuality is pansexuality, which is a fairly new term here in the last few years. It is across the gender spectrum, is what it means. So it's interesting to me when I see kids in high school, particularly, I have almost a seventeen-year-old daughter at home who is very out and proud and very gender fluid, and her confidence to be able to speak and say, this is who I am, and I'm proud to be who that is. Times have certainly changed since I was thirteen, and navigating my high school was not easy. You didn't talk about being gay, and I wasn't really in high school all that long ago. So Pride is that time. Pride is that time where people can be confident in who they want to be and love who they want to love, and they get to choose those things. So I appreciate you giving me a platform to talk about Pride.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you.
And I really encourage this Diversity Committee to have the opportunity to educate the public. I mean, events help, but open forums, we can help set those up to bring the public in, to have discussions, because obviously, the community, like many communities, have more work to do. But we want the Hispanic population, the African-American population, the LGBTQ communities all to feel comfortable, safe, welcome in La Porte, and we're relying on this committee here to work with us to educate as many people as possible and open that up, so thank you. Any thoughts from council?
I, I appreciate you guys, as I'm sure you well know, but I look forward to seeing more progress done, and you know, I'm here to help however I can, and to address the younger Mr. McCoy, you know, I'll answer your question by saying the city does stand with you. We certainly support you and, you know, any member who may not look like us in this community, and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney General Todd Raketa, outreach, John Cannon is here, John from Portage, great to have you, and.
John wants to update us on Attorney General Todd Raketa. This was a special night to be here. I learned a lot, so I appreciate everyone that spoke before me, and I am definitely not as eloquent as either one of them. I come on behalf of the Attorney General's office, excuse my voice here a little bit, the allergies are killing me the last couple of days here, so I'm sure it's going to get worse tomorrow, as they say it's going to be near a hundred, so. We are tasked to let you all know and let the communities know throughout Northwest Indiana and the state of Indiana. I cover thirteen counties, but we have six of my colleagues doing the same thing that I do, and that's let you know what our office does and what they can do for municipalities. July first, new laws will take effect in the state of Indiana, and. And as many may know, or I'm sure your attorney understands for sure, that some of these laws that are written are ambiguous and hard to understand and confusing. And it's hard for cities to implement those laws or those rules and regulations. So I'm here to let you know that we do have an advisory division that can advise all of you, your counsel, mayor. And there's a couple of laws that will affect the clerk treasurer's office as well. That we can help you implement those. We have an advisory division and you can contact, I'll leave you my card. You can contact me and I can get you to the right place if you have any questions. This side of the room may interpret one of the new rules or laws different than this side. Not because you're all 80s and those are some dollars, I'm just saying. So we can help you with that for the municipalities. For our residents and for yourself and for your city and police department, street department, fire department. I was just in Holbert two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, and spoke to them about unclaimed property like I'm going to do with you all. Their fire chief scanned the code here and found 1,307 bucks for the fire department for the city of Holbert that was owed to them through some ambulance charges. So I'm going to encourage everyone to check unclaimed property in indiana.gov and see if there's some money maybe waiting for you or for the city or for your departments. We give, we put 175 new items every week onto the website. And there's $540 million worth of property waiting to be claimed by residents of the state of Indiana. All the way from $3.24 from the BMV to a $1 million piece of property in Delaware County that is still unclaimed. It's just sitting there. Can't even grow corn on it at this point because no one knows who owns it right now. It's an unclaimed property. So please, I'll leave these with the clerk treasurer to share with the residents here in the office. But please, check that weekly. You never know, you may be, you may be a winner. As one of the ladies told me a couple of weeks ago, I was at an event and she jumped up and down. She's, I won, I won. I go, well, you didn't win, it's your money. So it was exciting. Also, one of the things that our Attorney General has been working extremely hard on since he took office in early 2021 is robo-calls and scam calls that are, that reach us usually every day. If it's not a call, it's an email or a text. And the Attorney General, along with 17 others throughout the country, sued the FCC to help them stop 1 billion calls coming into the, to the country. But you must understand, there are 800 billion calls that reach our phone system each day that are scams and/or some way of getting your information. So please delete those, please do not take those calls. And if you get the same call from the same number, please report it to our website at IN.gov/AttorneyGeneral. And that'll go on to more litigation that's waiting with the FCC. Those calls that stopped the little scratch that we made on the surface with the 1 billion calls come from Shanghai and the Philippines as well as Singapore. So that kind of gives you a range of where these things come from. But we're working diligently. He said he promised he was going to work on it and so far, so good. Last, one of the last things that I do want to speak about, actually two more, but the opioid settlement that just, I believe, the county here and the city is part of that. It was 529 million dollar settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson. That will be paid to counties and cities throughout Indiana. 20% of that can be used for whatever necessary. The rest of it must be used for opioid substance abuse deterrence. And maybe a counsel like you've put together here, mayor, is what kind of the suggestions are. And then we have identity theft is a huge one for the, for the office. And that is, there's really too much to talk about. I don't have enough time. I don't want to take all your time to talk about identity theft, but I do have some pamphlets here on a recovery plan if you do experience identity theft. And there is also a little bookmark here that also has some website information that I'll leave with the clerk treasurer as well. And last but not least, we do a lot of work with Medicaid fraud. If you know of Medicaid fraud in your neighborhood or if you suspect some, please report that to our website at IN.gov/AttorneyGeneral. There's a special button there that you can report. But our office last year in 2021 recouped $8 million fraud that was taken away from the needy and taken by the greedy. But we got it back, so now it's back in the needy category. But please, if you know of any of that information that may be going on or something you may suspect, our investigator is in every county. I don't know if the mayor knows where that office is of our inspectors or not. When I was the mayor of the city of Portage, I did not know they were in our city. But they, that happens on purpose so those folks don't get ramifications for their investigation, for their investigation team. So it's extremely important if we try to receive, or try to get the money to the right folks. And that's what our investigation team does. Over all of the offices and divisions of our office, last year, the Attorney General Todd Raketa's office returned $210 million back to the coffers that are part, that is part of the tax cut that was just automatically sent. If you haven't got your $125 yet, when you do get that and fill up your F-150, you can thank partially the Attorney General's office for helping get that surplus to that level so we can automatically take in the tax. I will take any questions if you all have any.
I actually have one.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Chief Breton, myself, school resource officer from LaPorte has, we've had several complaints, and not all of them, there have been particulars, about retail locations selling THC vape to underage students in high school. I mean, and the scary thought is, the school resource officer showed me his phone that's tied to the restroom that has a, I don't know what you call it.
It can detect vaping.
Marvin probably can say it, detect.
It's kind of a vape sensor, I guess.
Vape sensor, yes.
It also detects several other things, like vaping. cigarette smoke, THC smoke are two big things that it's looking for.
And I sat there with the school resource officer during past planning or passing period and how the phone just went chum, 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 ring, 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 ring. And we had had some reports, and Chief Breton led the charge with the team to go in and talk to a retailer that we believe, or at least was the problem of selling to underage students without checking IDs and so forth. But the state police are overwhelmed right now. They don't have time to look at it. And I don't know, does the Attorney General have any authority regarding vaping when our local officials or our local police department go out to address these issues?
Well, they would probably, we would probably team up with the Secretary of State's office because they have a business license.
Okay.
And being that Attorney General Raketa was a Secretary of State at one time, I'm sure we have someone of our 400 attorneys that can tell us which avenue to go. So I will.
Could you share that information with me when you find out?
Soon as we get some information back from the office. Mayor, you'll be the first one to receive that. You can send whoever necessary. But we've heard this before. We had the same thing brought up to us in Lafayette schools as well, so.
And has anything been done there?
I don't know where that information was sent at this point. I sent it up to the chain of command to some of the attorneys and it may take some time. The Secretary of State was a little bit busy for the last 15 months, trying to be Secretary of State again. So I'm not sure if things kind of fell through the cracks on that side of it. I'm not blaming anybody, just saying that that may have.
I don't know if that's good that they were spending more time trying to get re-elected. I kind of.
I'm just saying, I don't know if that's the case. I don't know if that's the case, sir, but the office may not have been as perky as our office would have been. So we may be waiting on them to get some information from them back. But that was partially a joke.
Other questions besides the phone falling off my microphone?
Maybe telling you something.
Thank you, John. Good to see you, as always.
I'll leave this information open and stable and exact, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem. It was wonderful. I was glad I was actually here to hear some of that, so. Thank you all again.
Standing committee reports.
Mayor, if I can give any help with that, please have some.
Thank you. Councilman Tim, Councilman President Tim Frankie.
The Diversity and Inclusion Committee will meet on Thursday, 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers. The Redevelopment Commission meets next Wednesday, the 29th, 5:15 p.m. in council chambers as well. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on Wednesday, June 15. There have been several instances where beachgoers are taking over the beach house concrete pad, the covered concrete pad for private parties. A new policy was put in place to prohibit the exclusive private use of the space at the beach house, so signs will be posted. Lake Fest is being held July 29 through July 31. Permission was given for the park to remain open past the normal closing time of 10:00 p.m. to accommodate the events that are happening that weekend. It will also allow for off-road parking for the event. The board approved the style and the scope of the project to replace the balcony seating at the civic auditorium. The new seating will be padded and each chair will have a drink holder. The new seating allows for wider handicap accessible aisles and the installation of much-needed handrails. As a public service announcement, the park will be more diligent in patrolling the parks after dark and will now be ticketing and/or towing any vehicles that are parked past park hours or parked overnight. And then, due to the 4th of July holiday, Traffic Commission will be meeting a week later, so we'll be meeting Tuesday, July 12, 5:00 p.m. at the police station.
And it was great to see, after three years of public meetings and so forth with the Park Department, that the kayak rentals are now a reality. And again, it was great to see the public working together for three years, having open meetings and talking about that to set the stage for what now is access to kayaks.
Yeah, Mark's been putting in a lot of work getting that done. I thought he was here.
Councilman Vincent.
Nothing to add this evening.
Councilman Galloway.
Police Mayor Commission met last Tuesday, the 14th. It ended in about five minutes, that's all I got to report.
Councilwoman Cutler.
At the June Business Improvement District Board meeting, City Planner Craig Phillips presented quotes to the board for the repair of sidewalk pavers and planters within the bid, as well as the removal of electric outlets by trees and in the planters on Lincoln Way. The quotes were all approved and repairs will begin ASAP in preparation for the upcoming 4th of July parade. Mayor Dermody also attended the meeting and spoke with the Bid Board members about long-term decisions on the horizon for the bid and thanked the Bid Board for their work. Thank you for that, Mayor. Jim Kaminsky reported on the quarterly long-term planning meeting held in May and shared that it's important that the decision-making of the bid is driven by the city's future design plans for the bid as the infrastructure is aging out. The irrigation is on in the planters, but some sprinklers are not working. Molefield Properties will continue to water those planters individually until the repairs can be made. And finally, the Christmas decor in the bid district was discussed and money was approved for some additional upgrades to the downtown decor. And lastly, Erica Kaney stepped down from her position on the board as she is no longer employed within the bid. This leaves an open seat, but will not affect Quorum at this time. Anyone interested in serving on the board must either work, live, own a business, or a property within the bid to serve. The next meeting of the bid will be Monday, July 11 at 5:00 p.m. City Hall. And the UEA, June meeting of the UEA was canceled for lack of business. The next scheduled meeting of the UEA is Wednesday, August 17 at 4:00 p.m. at the LEAP office. There will be no meeting in July. End of report.
Councilwoman West.
Nothing to report tonight.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
The Airport Authority's next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 13 at 5:15 at the airport. And the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, will meet here tomorrow at 5:30.
Thank you all. Let's move on. Introduction of a resolution. Councilwoman Ficus.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
A resolution authorizing a temporary loan from Major Moves Fund to the city's Fire Lease Debt Service Fund and 2017 RDC GO General Obligations Bond. Whereas the city of LaPorte has not received its spring distribution of tax funds for the year 2021, pay 2022, and whereas LaPorte County officials have stated that they are uncertain as to when the spring distribution for tax funds for the year 2021, pay 2022, may be distributed. And whereas there are insufficient funds in the city's Fire Lease Debt Service Fund number 3302 and the 2017 RDC GO Bond Fund number 3311 to meet the city's normal operating expenses for the remainder of 2022. And whereas there are sufficient funds within the city major moves account to loan the city's Fire Lease Debt Service Fund number 3302 in the amount of $58,965.14 and the 2017 RDC GO Bond Fund number 3311 in the amount of $144,650. Now therefore, be it resolved as follows. Section 1, that a loan of funds of $58,965.14 shall be made from the city's major moves account to the city's Fire Lease Debt Service Fund number 3302. Section 2, that a loan of funds of $144,650 shall be made from the city's major moves account to the city's 2017 RDC GO Bond Fund number 3311. Section 3, that said loan shall be repaid from the city's Fire Lease Debt Service Fund number 3302 account and the city's 2017 RDC GO Bond Fund number 3311 to the city's major moves account upon final distribution from the county to the city of LaPorte of its tax funds for 2021, pay 2022, which final distribution may occur after December 31, 2022. Section 4, that the clerk treasurer of the city of LaPorte be and is hereby authorized to make all action necessary to affect the above noted loan and repayment. End of resolution.
So this is a resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Courtney Parthoon, our clerk treasurer, if you'd like to give a brief breakdown of what this actually does?
Well, as with everything, since the start of the administration, we're in a unique situation where we will, I can't say definitively that we will need the temporary loan, but in the circumstance that we do need the temporary loan, this just allows us to keep our bond payments up to date, especially as budget season is upon us, so that we can make good budgetary decisions moving forward. So.
Because it can be costly, as we've seen the county talk about the issues with bond payments, bond ratings and so forth.
We have the ability to make a temporary loan in the instance that we do need it. So we did request and receive an advanced tax draw. It was only for our main fund, so it wasn't for any of our, any of our bonds or the TIFs or any of the special units. So we've still got some time left in June, so we will see. And if we don't, then we have the temporary loan in place to remedy that.
So the debacle that happened at the county, so this is, you're saying we've received funds, but not due to fixing the problem, due to more revenue coming in than expected at the county?
We requested, as we are required, if there is an instance where we will not receive our settlement, we are required to request in advance, and we did that, and we received an advance.
Gotcha, okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody from the public? Council members?
It's better to use the money we have than borrow from somebody. Because we did that for years and paid almost a million dollars in interest. The last big debacle, this one here is nothing compared to the last one. So I've been through that. So this is the way to do it right here.
And I was going to say, thanks, Courtney, for thinking ahead on this too, just in case.
And the way the clerk treasurer and her team have done, we should, could be in very good position and already thinking, as Carol said, thinking ahead. Further comments? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Councilwoman Cutler.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety. Second. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
A resolution approving financing of SPHD-3.0 asphalt dump trailer for street department through Indiana Bond Bank. Whereas the city of LaPorte Street Department has a need to purchase a step manufacturing model SPHD-3.0 asphalt dump trailer for $50,240. And whereas the city of LaPorte will finance the SPHD-3.0 asphalt dump trailer through Indiana Bond Bank. And whereas Crossroads Bank provided the low bid for four years with a qualified rate of 3.66%, which will be held for 30 days from the date of the quote on June 6th, 2022. And whereas the total interest for the four-year period will be approximately $3,597.84 and the semi-annual payment will be paid from street department's budget. Now therefore, be it resolved, that city of LaPorte Common Council hereby approves the financing of a step manufacturing model SPHD-3.0 asphalt dump trailer for $50,240 and hereby authorizes Mayor Dermody to sign financial documents from Indiana Bond Bank. End of resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before we go to discussion, clerk treasurer Parthoon, a basic understanding.
So at the last board of works meeting, I believe, Jeff Bachelor asked board of works to approve a specific piece of equipment. I believe it's a hot asphalt patcher for the street department that, that broke down and without that, we will not be pothole-free LaPorte. So the, the equipment company that he requested for board of works approval, the, the equipment company could, could finance, we just touched base with Indiana Bond Bank to see if they could beat it, match it, whatever. They saved us $5,400 in interest, so.
Nice work.
We are asking for, yeah, for council approval for the street department to pay their own, pay for their own equipment. We want them to pay for it out of their budget every year and, and approve financing through Indiana Bond Bank for, for this piece of equipment.
Thank you, and I do have a motion and a second.
You do.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody from the public? Anybody on council? All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. A couple topics before Mr. Galloway puts it into the meeting. 39 North, you've heard about the Conservancy District and the water situation. We've had our second round of meetings with some homeowners. Overall, it's been very positive and residents seem to understand the dilemma that we're trying to solve, that we did not create. And I encourage anybody that's interested, 39 North Conservancy District is having a meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the IBEW building on 39 and please bring your questions, statements. If you don't believe we're stating something correctly, gather all that information. We'll meet with anybody of what we talked about and be glad to share that information as we continue to move forward solving a water issue, infrastructure issue that does not guarantee we have enough water flow to fight a fire. Any other comments from the members that were at that meeting? We've had several members come to us to say, how do we start the process of annexation? I think that's a comment, or that's something that has to go through attorney Otis and you know.
I think as usual, you see a lot of mistruths by a few people online on social media and you know, to your point, anyone reading it and thinks, well, that doesn't seem right. Well, it's probably, probably not, but that's why we're here to welcome you and answer any questions you have.
Absolutely. Okay, also want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July for everyone in the city of LaPorte. We are the capital for the day and we're excited and do not forget that at 7:15 out at Fox Park, the symphony will be playing to be followed by, I think nine, or seven o'clock and then 9:15, the fireworks display at Fox Park. So is that correct?
Yes.
I think the times.
So then our next meeting would be the 5th?
Yes.
Correct. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
We all got to sign.